Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call together this regular meeting of the King George Board of Supervisors. We're going to start off with an invocation by Mr. Collins and then a pledge allegiance by Mr. Miller, so if you would all please stand.
Lord, we need you. Please sweep across this nation and heal this land. Restore our strength, renew our minds, and banish everything that is not you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, everyone. Mr. Miller, any amendments to the agenda?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'd like to open the floor up now for public comment. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person in order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. If comments relate to a specific public hearing item, we ask that you offer those comments at the time of the public hearing. And if you do come up, please state your name and address before you start speaking. Anyone here for general public comment? Ms. Lovell?
Hi, my name is Anna Maria Lovell. I live in Presidential Lakes. Tonight, I want to ask the supervisors to see if they can eliminate the charge for the county license fee. It's okay to charge one-time fee when people move into the county, but you are charging over and over. In the past, the county gave out stickers every year at the stop to save on the cost of the sticker. Now they continue to charge for nothing. Also, I have a lot some... Also, you have spent a lot of money in 2021. You approved five new school buses. Mr. Jeff Bush warned that you should be careful with spending. The county may someday lose the income from the landfill. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Mike Ryan. I live in Osprey Road down in Matthias Point. I have lived in King George for the past 32 years and only this year became aware of a document at the revenue office called the field sheet. Someone here said it looks like an MLS listing. It does. It shows assessed market value of our homes. The revenue office maintains the field sheet that shows every item we pay taxes on for our land and our home. Most homeowners have no idea this document exists. Homeowners that do have found errors and inconsistencies. These errors and inconsistencies can cause taxpayers to pay more taxes than they ought than they should for years. The county sends out a tax bill that simply says pay this amount. It does not itemize what we are paying taxes on other than indicating for land and improvements based on assessed market value. Homeowners that have a mortgage never receive that bill. It's sent directly to the mortgage company. When we go to a restaurant, we receive itemized bills for what we order. We take our vehicles in for repair, we get an itemized bill. We all pay thousands of dollars for personal property taxes for our homes. We should receive an itemized bill. That bill is the field sheet that should also include the tax rate for that year. The county needs to send the sheet to all homeowners yearly. Homeowners should know what they are paying taxes on things, like air conditioners, bathroom plumbing, sheds, well water, and on and on. The revenue office also has what I believe is called a property card for other improvements that needs to be available to everyone. It shows taxes for personal property. It has 122 items on it, and nine, only nine are not taxable. I would express other concerns on taxes based on assessed market value and personal property, but with only three minutes to speak, it's not possible. I suggest that anyone listening, get your field sheet from the King George Revenue Office and check it for errors and know what you are paying taxes on. Thank you, and I hope you will ensure that homeowners receive this information.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Anyone else for public comment? Mr. Bush?
Good evening, Board.
Welcome.
Good to see you guys again. Jeff Bush, 6139 Fifth Street, Fairview Beach, King George, Virginia. I'm here tonight because I saw the agenda for tonight with the closed session item, and I'd like to address some concerns that I have with that particular item. So, past experiences with this board, things tend to usually be above board, okay? I will concede that. However, there also has been occasions where certain members of the Board of Supervisors were privileged to information where other members of the Board of Supervisors were not. I've experienced that myself. So, obviously, I do not know exactly what the disciplinary action for an elected member of the Board of Supervisors is tonight, but my concern is transparency. What really pinged me to come give comment tonight was months ago, when I had become aware of closed-door meetings with members of the Board of Supervisors regarding a potential merger of the Service Authority and the county. That email went unanswered. I emailed every member of the Board of Directors and every member of the Board of Supervisors. I heard back from Mr. Collins. So, tonight, I asked my representative of the Board of Directors for the Service Authority and my duly-elected member of the Board of Supervisors, where do we currently stand on the potential merger of the Service Authority and the Board of Directors, and why, a year later, do we still have an interim general manager of the Service Authority? Nobody could answer me. That is problematic if I go to a duly-elected official and he can't answer something. But I know he is not, he might not have the information, but I know someone on the Board or someone in the administration does have an answer. This is problematic. We all campaign, we all hear talking points on transparency. I find that lacking. That is concerning. I know there are reasons, legitimate reasons, that closed sessions are held, but I also know that there are things that conveniently we can find provisions that allow for us a closed session, but necessarily don't need to take place in a closed session. This Board is to serve the public, and the public should be made privileged to as much information as possible. I've got 22 seconds left, so I'll end that with this on a positive note. Thank you for your service. I know it's not an easy job. I know you can't please everybody. Thank you for what you do. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. Ms. Fairfax?
Mr. Chairman, may I approach to hand out some stuff?
Sure.
I've handed you the noise standards for several localities. Allow me to quickly point out a few things. Most of the counties have set a standard of 60 decibels by day and 55 at night as the maximum noise levels in residential areas. There are two outliers. Falkir sets 65, but they require a noise study before a data center can be built and once it is complete. It seems the two data centers that Falkir has support the CIA's Training Center, and one can be sure they are not located in close proximity to anything. The other outlier is Loudon, where the residential limit is 55 for both day and night. Warrentons shows an example that takes into account frequency as well. Amazon reported at an October 25th meeting that it would meet that strict noise ordinance if allowed to build there. The current King George standard is 75 decibels. That's 10 times louder than Falkir's. Our current ordinance is not designed to deal with constant 24/7 industrial noise. 74 decibels is the noise level of a Dyson vacuum cleaner five feet away, a hair dryer at one foot, and a battery-powered leaf blower at five feet. Imagine if you were asked to live with that level of noise on your property 24/7/365. If you have not already done so, I implore you to listen to the October 11th Planning Commission meeting. The president of Great Oak HOA spoke to the horrible noise problems that residents are experiencing where there is an 800-feet distance. 450 of that is original growth trees. One reason Prince William is in a mess is because of their noise ordinance. If King George wants to be ready for data center proposals, it must have noise standards in place that protect the citizens. The places where data centers have succeeded are those with well-written and well-enforced standards that are frequently updated as new information emerges. Data Center Dynamics reports that on September 20th, 2022, Loudon limited the areas where data centers could be placed by right, and those that are permitted will face stricter environmental controls to make exteriors less ugly and limiting the noise. The data center will have to make up less than half of the building space. Our comprehensive plan states under Industrial Land Use Policy 7G that strategies should ensure, not encourage, but ensure that all new industrial uses provide adequate protection of adjacent existing land uses through noise and lighting controls. Poor governance says, "Well, we need the revenue, and some folks are not going to be happy, but we have to put these somewhere." But good governance ensures proper standards are in place to protect its citizens before even considering data centers, so that industry and citizens can both thrive.
Thank you, Mrs. Fairfax. Anyone else for public comment?
My name is Arne Eliason. I live at 12,000 Lagrange Lane in King George. My remarks this evening will also focus on issues related to noise and how noise affects our health and our happiness. Noise pollution has been considered to be an urban problem, but noise levels in rural King George County have been increasing insidiously. I'm therefore certain that county planners have been careful to consider the effects of noise, what is called the invisible pollution. A problem when assessing noise is that it has several dimensions. One is loudness, usually measured in decibels. Two is pitch, expressed as frequency. And three, exposure time or duration of the noise. OSHA and NIOSH set standards on loudness and duration of exposure that's allowable in order to limit risk of hearing loss. Those guidelines are, of course, very important, but our calculations on acceptable noise levels have to be more sensitive than merely protecting against hearing loss. Lower levels of noise have consequences, too. Noises at night may be particularly troublesome. Noises at lower decibels may help some people get to sleep, but keep other people awake. Any noise perceived as annoying will have physiological consequences. Such a stimulus provokes an adrenaline surge resulting in a rapid heart rate, a spike in blood pressure, anxiety, and raised hackles. If persistent, these physiological responses result in diagnosable mood disorders such as anxiety and depression. Such adrenaline surges may lead to chronic hypertension, cardiovascular disease, the number-one killer in the U.S., and disruption of the body's circadian rhythms. As a sleep doctor, I often evaluate and treat insomnia. In many cases, noise is an integral issue that causes, or at least exacerbates, insomnia. As everyone is aware, King George is home to many kinds of animals, both domestic and wild. The effects of noise is less well-studied in our furry and feathered neighbors, but we know animals are more affected than humans by high-frequency sounds and lower levels of noise. Noise affects fertility of animals, may disrupt nesting birds, and affects migration patterns. Chickens may stop laying eggs. As the county moves forward with plans for development and changes in ordinances, it's critical that noise be a factor that is carefully considered. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, sir. Up next?
Good evening. My name's Tom Kramer. I live on Rookhamby Lane in King George. What I'd like to do tonight is invite the Board to come. I'm also the chairman of the King George Wetlands Board. I've never seen a Board member at any of our meetings. I would like to welcome you to come to the Wetlands Board. Like the other gentleman was speaking about the animals and birds, our wetlands are a very precious thing that we have. King George has some beautiful wetlands, and it really needs to be respected, and I would hope the supervisors would care a lot about that because that keeps a lot of us alive from, you know, depleting oxygen levels and everything. The Board meets whenever there's a wetlands issue. I do, I would appreciate if you could talk to the county a little bit about getting information packets to the Board members. Recently, over the past year or two, maybe not two years, but at least over the year or more, our packets come two or three days before the meeting. We like to go out and field verify issues that, you know, Virginia Marine Science has looked at, the county has looked at, but we get a packet two days before. We need to make contact with the homeowner to see if we can come out and look at their property, and sometimes that just doesn't work. And we rely, have to rely on these other boards or these other members, what they say on the wetlands needs to be done. And they do a good job. I have to give them a hand for that, but the Wetlands Board needs to look at this also. I was trained by Carlton Griffin. I don't know if any of you knew that gentleman, but he was, he's, you know, he knew more about the wetlands than anybody in this county, and I've got a big shoe to fit, and I need everybody's help, including yours. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for public comment? Mr. Fairfax?
Todd Fairfax, 623 Kings Highway. Mr. Chairman and members of the Board, continuing our research into noise matters, the ANSI Standard S 12.60 entitled Acoustical Performance Criteria: Design Requirements and Guidelines for Schools addresses issues of background noise and their effect on speech intelligibility and therefore instruction and learning in classrooms. There is recognition that excessive background noise impairs children's ability to learn. Standards are set based upon the size of the classroom and stipulate that one hour steady-state background noise levels should not exceed 35 or 40 decibels, depending on the classroom size. Sound transmission from exterior to interior of the classroom contributes to the background noise. With the recent resubmission of the Burchwood application, noise restrictions on the development area that includes the former Butzner property need to be codified well and specifically in our county noise ordinance before any applications are approved. Buildings in that development area are proffered to be no higher than 110 feet, not including any mechanical equipment on the roof. The mechanical equipment on the roof is likely the noise source for data centers on that property since that's where the noisy fans are located for cooling. The nearest point of the former Butzner property to Sealston Elementary School is 1,100 feet or about .2 miles. Noise travels is not significantly reduced by vegetative buffers, and noise generated from high above the ground level on a roof will travel great distances. This puts the children at Sealston Elementary School at risk for having excessive background noise in their classrooms during the school day, negatively impacting their ability to learn. Second, I've been studying the Burchwood application resubmission, specifically the portion of the rezoning narrative where the applicant anticipates new tax revenue. The applicant references in a footnote that the analysis supporting their projections derives from information provided by the Fredericksburg Regional Alliance and Mangum Economics Report dated October 2022 that was provided to the county's Economic Development Office. I've read that report. It is six pages in length with three pages containing the substance. Throughout the three pages are footnotes for nearly every financial figure cited therein. For many of those footnotes, the source has stated as, quote, "data center investment numbers provided by industry experts and based on experience with similar projects. There are no objective and examinable sources of hard numbers specifically referenced. The report really amounts to a trust-me, trust-me source as evidence of the revenue projections." If there are objective numbers from the industry experts, those should be provided. If we are examining such a significant industrial undertaking, shouldn't the county and the public expect to see what hard data underlies such lofty promises of tax revenue and the associated benefits to the citizens at large from that tax revenue? Yes, I think we should. Please consider these points. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fairfax. Anyone else for general public comment? All right, seeing none. Anyone have any statements or anything? Emails need to be read in. Ms. Kupka?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you know, you and I received an email late this afternoon from Mr. Brent Hunsinger, who serves as the Title Programs Manager, State Policy Coordinator of Friends of the Rappahannock. Hello, I have sent this to you both in hopes it is received by one of you in time for tonight's meeting. I am unable to attend the meeting. I would respectfully ask that the following be read into the public comment record at this evening's Board of Supervisors meeting. As always, we, Friends of the Rappahannock, value the opportunity to work with the resident staff and elected officials of King George County on issues that affect the health of the Rappahannock River. We understand the county has a need for water and to approve projects that increase the tax base. I look forward to continuing the conversation on how these needs can be met while also protecting the health of the Rappahannock River for the wildlife that it, that calls it home and the myriad of recreational and commercial users. With that in mind, I would like to reiterate how important it is to allow the Planning Commission to finish its zoning ordinance overhaul process before considering the rezoning of hundreds of acres from agricultural to industrial designation. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mrs. Kupka. Mr. Dines, anyone in line for public comment?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. All right, I will close up general public comment and move to reports of members of the Board. Ms. Bender?
Thank you very much. I will try to go over this quickly so that we can get on with the meeting. I want to thank everyone who came out and gave public comment. I appreciate it, took some notes, and I appreciate you coming and speaking to us, and I wish more people would come in front and tell us what they think and how they feel in the community. First thing I would like to mention is I met with some residents on one road in, in the Shiloh District, and I had a great conversation with them. They were talking about how to get a road brought into the VDOT system, and so we had great conversation. They also talked about development, CIP, the rezoning that we heard from earlier, and they even talked about dog running, which we had a resident come a couple of, a couple of meetings before to talk about that, and it seems like it is a concern in Shiloh with more residents than just one area. So, I would ask those that are hunting and that to please respect the landowners and understand they have rights, too. So, and keep your dogs off their property, please. So, next up, I received an email from some of the people that I work with in the HB 206 meeting, and it's from DEQ, and they gave us an opportunity for, well, didn't give us the, the opportunity to apply for some more grants, and I thank Mr. Minor and his staff for looking into it, and Mr. Miller for looking into it also. And it's opening through December 15th, and it's to help with wastewater infrastructure only in collection, and maybe we could take an opportunity to make some more, get some grant, more grant opportunities to help the Service Authority out and the things we need to fix. I also had some conversation with some citizens, and I've heard this quite a bit in the last year, they'd love a dog park at Barnesfield or at Sedell Brooks Junior Park, so I hope it'll come back up in our next round of CIP because there's a lot of people in our community who would like a dog park in the community. We also had Ralph Bunch Museum Subcommittee meeting, the Dogland Heritage Museum. We had a meeting, and they're hoping visitors come back out with the bridge being open. They're very excited, and once everything wraps up the construction, they're hoping they get a lot more visitors. We will see. I used to tease them that it would be a drive-through Starbucks, but I hope their optimism that they'll get a lot of people coming into the museum now that might be a little easier to navigate. I want to also do a shout-out to Sheriff Giles and his deputies, and Dr. Boyd and the transportation staff. One of our buses carrying, well, my daughter was on the bus with the middle school basketball team, and it broke down in an area that has a lot of accidents near Fletcher's Chapel, and it was in the fast lane, and they, I appreciate their quick response to come out and secure the bus in the area and get the kids on another bus and get them to their game. They lost, but I do appreciate his staff for taking care of them because I saw where the bus was, and it did concern me because it was in the fast lane, and as you know, in that area, a lot of people don't slow down, so I really appreciate their attention to the matter. Thank you very much. I also met with Sam Stello with the Ham Radio Club, and I already spoke to Mr. Stonehill about getting him on our future agenda. They'd like to come in, and they're reorganizing. They would like to talk about how ham radio helps the county and get more interest in their, in helping with emergency operations. My dad was a ham radio operator, so it's, they, they do good things, and they are good for in an emergency to help be a backup to our EMS and our fire and rescue. If things go down, they can help out using their radios and their emergency management skills. I'm just trying to see all the thing. I also want to thank Representative Whitman. I got an opportunity to go on base with him sort of in his farewell tour, and I had some good conversations with local officials that were there and also seeing the technical side of the base and understanding a little more of their role. Every time you go on the base, I've been on the Board for five years, and I think every time I get to see something else, so it's really good to see how they benefit the community and all the different job opportunities hopefully that our young people will have in the future on the base. And that is all I have for the moment. I'm sure I missed some things, but I don't want to ramble on forever, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Bender. Mr. Granger?
Yes, sir, thank you. First, I'd say thank you to everyone who came out and provided public comment. I'll try to speak to those comments. Ms. Lovell, your concern about the charge for the county license fee, Ms. Kupka's been an advocate for getting rid of that pretty heavily. We did discuss that a couple of weeks ago with looking at whether to do it starting in January, and Ms. Kupka again advocated starting, and it would require hiring new people and getting everyone up to speed, and I'll be honest, I wasn't prepared to take on that challenge for this current fiscal year coming up, so I advocated for waiting for the next year. And so I appreciate you might not like that answer, but I think the Board is looking to move forward with it, but not starting in January. We're looking probably at the following January, so just to give an update on that situation. Mr. Bush, it's always nice to see you back again, so thanks for coming out and providing your comment. You know, it's good to see you and being involved in the community as well, so thank you for that. Ms. Fairfax? And Elias, Eliason? Did they say that? All right, both spoke about the noise ordinance. I appreciate your inputs and data, so I appreciate that to help just provide some clarification, especially in the comparison to other localities. It's always nice to see that. Mr. Ryan, I'm sorry, I missed, I skipped over you. I agree with you 100%. Citizens should go in and review that field sheet and verify that it is accurate. I think that's 100%, you know, people should be making sure that that is, that is correct, yes. So, thank you for coming out and speaking upon that. I think that's a fair point, and definitely should be. It's not a back and forth. I apologize right now, sir, so, but no, I do appreciate you coming out. Mr. Kramer, I appreciate you coming out from the Wetlands Board and the invitation for coming out. Believe it, when it does meet, it's the fourth Thursday of the month? When it does meet is my understanding? Again, I'm just sorry, it's not a back and forth. Yep, I'll figure it out, so, but I appreciate you coming out. Yes, sir, thank you. And Mr. Fairfax, I appreciate you coming out to speak about economic impacts and things like that along in regards to economic development, and especially in particular about the Burchwood site, so thank you for your comments. Only thing I have is just to say thank you to FRA for the annual meeting that we had on the October 19th. I had an opportunity for some consultants to come out to the region to kind of evaluate our region, and one of the biggest things I think I heard over and over again from all the different consultants was identity and our identity as a region. From their perspective kind of coming in, it was kind of like, we're not DC, we're not, not Richmond, we're other, and that's not necessarily the identity you want to have a brand as opposed to being like, we're not them. So, you know, that, that includes, when you consider the FR region, that's us, Caroline County, Fredericksburg, Stafford, and Spotsy, so that's that region, and from that perspective that they were coming and looking at, at the region. So, it doesn't- So it doesn't necessarily work down to the northern neck because that is probably a different perspective as well if they were to evaluate that area. So that's all I have, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Granger. Mrs. Kupka?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Want to start by thanking everyone for coming out and joining us for public comment this evening. Ms. Novell, nice to see you as always. Thank you. You came to both meetings tonight. Thank you for your comments. Mr. Ryan, I've spoken to you multiple times on the telephone as I tried to help you sort through some of the tax issues you were experiencing. It's good to finally put a face with the name. Thank you very much for coming out and sharing your concerns with us. Mr. Bush, thank you for coming out and remaining engaged in your community and with our board. And I will say, I can specifically answer your question. Where do we stand on the proposed merger of the Service Authority and Board of Supervisors? Mr. Miller actually answered that question in a public meeting of the Service Authority on July 19th. It's recorded in the minutes. The minutes are not summarized by staff. The Service Authority Board meeting minutes are transcribed word for word. And please indulge me, Mr. Chair, I'd like to read from the minutes. So Mr. Miller was delivering his general manager's report and said, again, in answering some questions of Ms. Cleveland, again, the question on the merger, as you alluded to, the board has kind of, we've kind of placed it on hold. As Mr. Morris has alluded to, we have to do that at this point because we are receiving $5 million this year of water resource funding from the Virginia Department of Health. And they were basically, they told us essentially, discussions of your merger need to basically be put on hold because it could affect the receipt of the grants, and we certainly don't want to delay that. So that is on the public record. I'm not sure why you didn't get an answer to that question, but it's right there. And again, all of the minutes of the Service Authority Board of Directors are published on the website after the meeting. And again, they are word for word transcription. Mr. and Mrs. Fairfax, thank you as always for coming out and remaining engaged on these issues. And you do your homework every time. And thank you for bringing us more research. Thank you for that. Mr. Eliason, if I said that correctly, thank you for coming out and speaking to us with regard to noise pollution and how it affects our health and as well as those of our furry friends. Thank you very much. Mr. Kramer, thank you for your service on the Wetlands Board. I do note that while you have a normal meeting day, it only meets periodically when a matter is scheduled. So if we find out, and we will certainly have Mr. Miller pass on to community development staff, that you all would appreciate a little more notice with regard to your board packet so you can do your research because we all like to be able to have as much information as possible and do research. So thanks for coming out. And that'll wrap that for those in person. Let me pull up my board report. I too attended the GWRC meeting with Ms. Bender on October 24th. On October 27th, attended the Rappahannock Regional Jail Board of Directors meeting. I want to give kudos to some of our public safety officials. First, on October 20th, and I'm going to summarize this call, Sheriff, if you'll forgive me, I'm not going to belabor the details, but summary, the sheriff's office responded to a call for an abduction situation on Galvey Loop. Responding units located the victim, who was able to escape from the suspect, and deputies rendered aid and requested medical attention from medics. The suspect vehicle was located nearby, and deputies gave chase to the suspect, who was armed with a machete and a chain. Canine whiskey engaged the suspect, who struck canine whiskey multiple times with the chain. The suspect ultimately was apprehended by canine whiskey, taken into custody and held without bond on multiple felony charges. So I want to thank all of the personnel who worked this call from dispatchers, paramedics, deputies, and our hero canine whiskey. And I do have a bag of greenies for him. Hopefully between you, Sheriff Giles, and Chief Moody, you can submit the entire team for a regional first responders valor award next summer. And another public safety note, on October 27th, 2022, the Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services underwent an inspection by Virginia Department of Health Office of EMS, including equipment, facilities, apparatus, training requirements, policies, and personnel records, et cetera. Chief Moody is pleased to report, we had zero violations and renewal of our license through October 31, 2024. And I'll just remind everyone that the Department of Social Services is again hosting a Thanksgiving and Christmas program to help those in need in our community. Contact DSS if you would like to help. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Kupka. Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Welcome and greetings, everyone. Good to see everyone. The first thing on my public comment will be I was reached out by a builder in the community who is also my constituent, and he stated that they're having trouble getting inspections. I understand that we are low on inspectors. He was asking if the third party inspections could be changed from just concrete work to maybe framing and some other things, at least on the temporary so that because he says that they only doing 15 inspections a day, and Wednesdays they're closed for inspections. And if a big group like Hopyard calls in an inspection, they get all 15. So I was hoping we could look into that matter to use the third party inspectors, at least on the temporary, to help relieve some of the inspection offices problems. Ms. Lavelle, it's good to see you. I wasn't there for that meeting in regards to the $20 charge that equals up to $747,000 a year. I'm still looking over the transcripts. So I'm not, earlier it was said that the board was in agreement. I don't, I'm not, I haven't agreed on anything yet. I am still looking over the information. Mr. Ryan, I got my field sheet, and it was incorrect. I encourage everyone to get their field sheets. Mr. Kramer, I'd like to go to the Wetlands Board meeting also because I'm in a wetland. I'd be interested to know when the meetings occur. Mr. Bush, good to see you again. I'll read a statement that'll maybe talk about some of your points. Mr. and Mrs. Fairfax and Mr. Hunsinger, Hossong, the gentleman in the back. In regards to the noise, anybody that puts in a rezoning, I'm concerned about noise, pollution, traffic, tax revenue, and so forth. So your your concerns are not, they're being investigated and being heard by this member. On October 18th, during the last public meeting of the Board of Supervisors, the board entered into a closed meeting for presentation. During the closed meeting, along with other board members, received a very long handout with the abundance of information. It was made evident that other board members had previous knowledge of the presentation content information. The presenters presented, and their presentation came to a conclusion. I kept the handout to review it later. I was then bullied by other board members for a period of time to return the handout. With so much information to absorb in such limited time in order to have a better understanding of what had been presented, I wanted to keep the handout and study it at a later time. Several board members continued to bully me about returning the handout. I requested from the board members and the county attorney to provide me with a rule or law that required me to return the handout. The bullying continued with no one able to provide me with any rule or law to return the handout. I realized the burden to keep the information private is on me. So tonight's agenda, the board is proposing an amendment to the bylaws. So if you don't like the current rules, just change them. That's where your board's at. Additionally, tonight, there's a scheduled closed session to discipline a member, me. Using a closed meeting exception is very weak. In the agenda packet, the subsection states that the section for the closed meeting is 2.2371181 and 2.2371188. The first section is for disciplining member referring to the following consultant. Number eight is consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters requiring provision of legal advice by such counsel. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to prevent a closed meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is attendance or is consulting on the matter. It says if the county attorney is merely present, that it does not constitute a reason for a closed session. How can you discipline a member when a rule did not exist? So now they make a rule and retroactively attempt to discipline a member. I do not agree with these proceedings taking place behind closed doors. The board goes into closed meeting for business to keep public in the dark and give them little time to investigate the information before an issue is brought to a vote by members. Member of this board disregard transparency. Government is not working for you, my friends. My job as an elected by the people is to represent the citizens of Jameson Road District, and I will be transparent on all matters, no matter how many times I am disciplined. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Ms. Lavelle, thanks for coming. Appreciate your smiling face at all of our meetings. And yes, that was something that we definitely spoke about in our work session. And as Mr. Granger alluded to, that probably will, can't really do anything until the next year, but that is definitely something in our radar. Mrs. Kupka has been a supporter of that, and she's really kind of helped navigate, you know, what we can do, what we can't go through so that that's something to look forward to for next year. But thanks for coming out. Mr. Ryan, thanks for coming out. And you know, you can contact me at any time as well. I'm the Dogger and Supervisor for you down there in Osprey. We did talk a lot about field sheets and things. I didn't know we had those until this year when, or I guess last year when we had our reassessment. And as Mr. Collins said, I found an error on mine as well. We did talk about it at length. I'm sorry you did not hear about it. I know it was posted on a lot of social media and things to contact Commissioner Revenue for those sheets. So by all means, you and anybody else, get that, as you said, receipt and see what you're being charged for and make sure that's correct. But thanks for coming out. Mr. Bush, thanks for coming out. Glad you're going to stay here in King George with us, see your face at more meetings. Mrs. Fairfax and Mr. Fairfax, thank you very much for all your information. As Ms. Kupka said, you certainly do your all's homework. And you know, we'll read this over later today or tomorrow or something. And I appreciate you guys coming out. And if you do want to stick around later on, Mr. Minor has a very interesting presentation on the rezoning of that area out there if it is gets done, but just he'll he'll have more information for everybody. Mr. Eliason, thanks for coming. And yep, noise issues are something we're definitely gonna, we're definitely gonna look at. And you know, we're going to make sure that if something happens out in that part of the county, that we're going to do everything we do can to make it correct. And if you're down on LaGrange, I know you have a lot of wetlands, wildlife, everything. It's a lot of a lot of area down there, spent a lot of time there. So thanks for coming out. Mr. Kramer, I'm sure that Mr. Miller can get ahold of Ms. Hall and see if we can get you your information earlier for meetings. That was something that we did here on our board to get it to us as well earlier than just a couple of days. So I'm sure Mr. Miller can speak to Ms. Hall about that when you do have your meetings. I have attended your meetings in the past, so I appreciate your service of of being on the Wetlands Board. And Ms. Kupka had her Mr. Hunsinger's letter written in or read into the meeting, and Friends of the Rappahannock has done a lot for King George, so we're definitely going to try to to help them as much as we can with their the health of the Rappahannock. It's a very vital resource to to our county. So and so moving on from there, Friday, the 28th, speaking of ham radios and stuff like that, Mr. Miller and I were here signing lots of paperwork for our new radio system for the sheriff's office and emergency services and everything. It's a long time coming. And also for the courthouse. So those are actually finally done deals, and they can start moving forward on the the radio system. It's been, we are talking to Sheriff Giles, it's probably 15 years in the making. So hopefully, that will be up and running as soon as possible, and the ham radio guys can be our backup. And then Saturday, the 29th, I attended the St. Paul's Church's Oktoberfest. It was a great event. It was actually packed. Our Senator Stewart was actually the parking attendant, and he, it was so busy, he just kind of threw his hands up and said, all right, everybody, you're on your own. Great event, really good time, good food, good drink, vendors. It was a Oompa Loompa band. I don't know exactly what that was called, but they were great. And they were already planning for next year, which is September 30th. And why September 30th for an Oktoberfest is that, actually Oktoberfest is the last week of September, ending on the first weekend of October. I didn't know that. I had to look that up. So they're they're getting ready for next September 30th. And I just wanted to make to mention that this weekend is the Caledon Arts and Wine Festival. And for everybody to come on out, let's pray for some great weather and come on out and see whatever, everything that they have to offer out there with their wines and ciders and arts and crafts and everything. It's always a great event for people. It's Saturday, 10 to 5, Sunday, 10 to 4. So if you have the time and you want to come out, please come on out to Caledon and see what they have. And that is all I have. So we'll close up that and move on to the consent agenda.
Move to up the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes. All right, constitutional officers report. I don't think we have any, but I see Sheriff Giles there in the background. Thank you, sir, for coming. And up next, report from the county attorney, Mrs. Lackey.
Good evening. I have a couple of items this evening. The first being that there was a request to look at a way to try to address some of the issues that have arisen with the Historical Society, but also get them on track to continue to resume operations of the museum building. So in your agenda package is a proposed license agreement. So the license agreement is a revocable agreement. It's basically permissive use of the building, but it outlines, you know, uses of the building that are compatible with courthouse operations. And it also mentions that the license agreement can be revoked at any time, but it's expected to be about a six month duration. And in the interim, that would allow the parties to formalize terms of a lease to bring back to you all for comment. I believe Ms. Parker is here, so if there are any questions, those can go to her. She indicated that the drafting was acceptable to the executive board of the Historical Society. Judge Hewitt and Vic Mason also were pleased with the current drafting of the proposed license agreement. So I'm available for questions on that.
Any questions for Mrs. Lackey? No questions? Okay.
And so if it's the will of the board by by motion, the license agreement, you can authorize the license agreement be executed, and it would become effective upon the Historical Society countersigning and providing proof of insurance. They did give me notice they've applied for that insurance, so I expect that that would be done pretty, pretty, pretty handily.
I'll make a motion to approve the license agreement for the King George Historical Society to resume museum operations as presented.
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes. Chair votes aye, motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. Lackey.
The next item are proposed amendments to the bylaws and rules of procedure for closed meetings. The board at its organizational meeting, the first meeting in January, adopted rules of procedure and bylaws. They are silent on what has been a longstanding practice of the board to not have materials that are presented in closed meeting, to have those physical materials leave the closed meeting space for reasons of confidentiality. And so that is one of the major changes in the proposed amendments. And it also prohibits bringing any recording devices or any note-taking capabilities other than staff members who may have a business need to record notes from meetings of the closed meeting. In additional changes, there are some changes that also better specify, I think, the rules of decorum for members of the Board of Supervisors. At one point in time, the county had both rules of procedure and rules of conduct. In recent years, they've kind of been all rolled together. So while I was looking at the closed meeting mechanics, I also looked at conduct of members so that there's some better specificity as to the conduct of members, not only in open public meeting, but also in other forums. And last but not least, based on a recent training that I attended, I added a provision that makes clarification that there is no, there's no cause of action that can arise just out of, you know, a mere inconsistency of the, the bylaws and rules of procedure that's not required by other law. That, that basically provides an additional protection that if we have something in our bylaws that's not followed to a T, but it's not required by law, then private citizens can't have a cause of action against the county. So that's a, a quick summary of those proposed amendments and I stand by for questions.
Any questions for Mrs. Lackey? Amendments?
No questions, but comments or discussion?
Okay, well, we'll get to that one. I'll let you know. Questions?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify something. Thank you. You did provide in here, if I remember reading through it, provisions so that, to address what Mr. Collins said about being able to review the material at a later date that you can, because I know that is one thing that I've brought up before, is, is sometimes we get packets that have a lot of information. And so to be able to, to have access to them again at another time.
Right, so the, the language as proposed would, would state that members of the board cannot leave the closed meeting with handouts from the closed meeting, but they can request the business cards of any third parties that may be entitled, invited to the meeting. And they also can inspect any records that are maintained in the office of the county attorney or county administrator, you know, at a, at a future date. So any closed meeting that they were authorized to attend, they could also, in the future, should they have a need to refer back to those materials, they can physically inspect those materials.
Thank you.
Anyone else with questions? All right, we have a, a motion.
I move to adopt the amendments to the bylaws and rules of procedures, King George County, Virginia Board of Supervisors as presented.
All right, we have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Collins?
So the bylaws was, were accepted in January this year. And then now we have a change, as I spoke with earlier. So when it talks about the, the board may sanction or censor a member for improper disclosure or confidential privileged information, though it's incumbent upon the member to keep that information confident. So that's when a sanction or censor may occur. Also, this new large paragraph in the bylaws talks about, I don't want to read the whole thing, but it says, you know, what Ms. Lackey said, the county administrator and the county attorney can have these documents, these handouts, but a board member can't. So they're employees of the board, but the, but the board members can't have the documents to review and, and keep privilege. I don't find that to be well-accepted. And it talks about bringing communication devices into the meeting. So this is a one-party state. You could record those meetings if you wanted to, but there's been no recording on my part for those meetings and I don't intend to. But I do intend to have my cellphone with me. Why, I wouldn't leave it out here for the security, because, you know, you can go on the internet and just like I took the training today, you don't leave those things unattended. Also, in my bag, I carry, you know, self-protection devices and I, I don't want to leave them out here and to be problematic. I want to make sure I secure those devices at all times. And a lot of times they're located in my bag. So it talks about not bringing in any type of paper. So this, this evening, you know, then when they're going to discipline me, I have evidence of, for my rebuttal, I think I should be able to bring in those, those documents to protect my, my interest and the interest of my constituents. So this, this new revision is lengthy to basically only have the county administrator or the county attorney have any documents in there. I disagree with this. And that's the end of my comments.
Okay, seeing no more discussion. We have a motion properly seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nay. Sorry, I jumped again there.
All right, we have two ayes. Any nays?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, chair votes aye, motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Lackey. All right, moving on to our public hearing. The King George County Board of Supervisors will now hold a public hearing that has been properly advertised or received public input regarding proposed ordinance to establish a method for refunding surplus personal property taxes on qualifying motor vehicles. I'll first ask for a staff report and then I will open the floor up for public comment. Public comment will be limited to three minutes per speaker in order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. Please state your name and address before you comment. And upon public comment, I'll bring the matter back to the board for consideration. The board may or may not take action tonight depending on information received during public comment. Slackey?
Yes, so this is an ordinance that is authorized by relatively new legislation on July 1st and new state law took effect that allows for refunds of personal property taxes in the event of a surplus, less any outstanding balances of taxes, fees, or interest. The statute does not define what a surplus is, but it gives this new local authority. So the proposed ordinance provides that in the event that the board by separate resolution declares a surplus, the surplus would be determined based on the budget projections for the personal property tax that would be subject to the potential refund. The refund, if, if such a surplus comes to be, the refund would be applicable to, you know, folks who have motor vehicles and to the extent that they contributed to the surplus. So there'd have to be some math involved as to, you know, what your tax burden was and how much of the surplus you would be entitled to a refund. The refund would be mechanically, mechanically refunded in the form of a credit to future personal property tax bills. And so folks who may not be aware, we have a tax year, which is a calendar year. We have a fiscal year, which is July 1 to July 1. They don't match up very well. So if, if there is in fact a surplus determined from this fiscal year, it would not be until next calendar year. I believe the June bill is when you might see a refund. But again, this is a little bit speculative. This ordinance is a placeholder in the event that by separate resolution, the Board of Supervisors comes to be aware that there is a surplus of funds that can be refunded in the form of a credit to those who continue to pay taxes in the, in the form of a check to those who, for whatever reason, no longer have a tax burden in the county. And the statement that the chair gave was correct. It was properly advertised. However, the advertisement said that the ordinance would be given in the agenda packet and there was a administrative omission. It was not included in the agenda packet. So in an abundance of caution, my recommendation is that we proceed with the public hearing, but perhaps that the ordinance be published in the next agenda package, because once again, this is not an ordinance that's needed for any immediate effect. So as a precaution, I would recommend that the board defers action on this item. But here's, here's from anyone who is interested in giving a comment during public hearing this evening.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Lackey. Any questions for Mrs. Lackey? Okay, seeing none. I will now open the floor up for public comment. Anybody here would like to comment on this? Mr. Bush?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like, the surplus, I would like for consideration to be given to applying any surpluses that the county realizes be applied to the debt service of the county and start paying that down. I, I know we had a debt mitigation plan previous years that was very successful and I, I would like to see this board bring that back to fruition. And maybe this is something where some of those dollars could be applied to it. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. Anyone else for public comment on this? All right, seeing none, I will close public comment. Anybody get any written statements or anything? No? Mr. Dines, anyone in line for this?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Then I will close public comment and like Mrs. Lackey said, this is something that we'll have to bring back up at another time for a vote. So moving on from there, 11:03 presentations and reports. Mr. Minor, economic impact of industrial zone projects.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So this evening, I'm going to provide a presentation on the economic impacts of industrial projects or economic development projects. They don't necessarily need to be industrial in nature, but the examples I'm gonna have today are industrial. But obviously, we know economic development projects can be commercial in nature, tourism-based, whichever the county is honestly targeting at the time. So I wanted to provide just a mission statement that's laid out in our Economic Development Strategic Plan. Encourage controlled development in diverse revenue streams in order to manage inevitable growth while preserving the historical, cultural, and rural character of our community. And one of the main priorities of our department is to work deliberately to diversify its tax base through smart growth that lessens our dependence upon consumer retail and legacy So the targeted industry sectors that our county and also the region focus on are manufacturing, agricultural, specifically greenhouses, R and D, information technology, professional business services, warehouse distribution, public administration. So these targeted industry sectors are mainly based on our existing workforce and our existing industries. So we have the workforce, whether locally or regionally, to attract these type of industries. So I'm going to talk about business-ready sites. I know I've had this discussion with the board several times, but this is also an information session, not just for the board, but also the public. So a company's decision on where to locate is multifaceted, but the first step is site development. So we all know that this is a state initiative. The General Assembly recently voted to put in about $150 million into the Virginia Business Ready Site Program for the 2022 to 2024 budget. So this is an area where the state has identified that Virginia needs to do better. And I have on here, the 15% of state projects require 250 acres or more. So these 15% of projects are really, what would they call, mega projects? Projects where they're talking about over 500 jobs and multimillion dollars, hundreds of millions of dollars in investment, up to a billion dollars in investment. So what does it mean to be business site-ready? The property or the land is to be properly zoned. You need to have water, utility access with capacity. Fiber availability is also important now, and as well as access to power. So speed to market. So expanding companies are competing globally and obviously if they're, if they need to be quick, localities or governments need to be quick as well in their response. So when King George is competing, we're not just competing locally or regionally, we're also competing against the entire mid-Atlantic, right? So we always need to keep that in mind, that it is a competition for these projects and that we just need to be aware that it's not just us. If, if the project goes away from King George, doesn't mean that nobody gets the project. I mean, it doesn't mean that we don't get the project, somebody else is gonna get it, right? So we just need to keep that in mind at all times. So I wanted to provide a slide on just the land use in the county. 1% of the county's land is zoned for industrial. Less than 1% of the county's land is zoned for light industrial. So I'm just putting this up there just to kind of put things in perspective. We are a rural county. 37% of the locality is in A1, the other, the other in A2, the 49%. So we're largely a rural county and I know that the county wants to stay that way. So what am I asking for? I'm not saying we should make the county 20% industrial, that's not what I'm asking for. What I'm saying is that if we just increase that percentage and it becomes business site-ready, then we can start to offset that tax base, we can start to diversify our economy and recruit and attract more projects. So targeted areas for industrial development. So what we're looking at here is the Route 3 West settlement area. And so in this settlement area, we have the EDA Industrial Park, which we no longer have any available parcels in. That's about 140-acre lot there that the county put into motion back in 2001. We also have the landfill. And while it's marked here as I believe A1, no, A2, this is considered industrial land. It's taxed in that manner. It's about 600 acres and we have about a 20-year lifespan on that property. The Birchwood parcel is zoned industrial, however, that is also proffered to only be a coal plant at the time. And we're going through that rezoning process and that proffer amendment to remove that, to potentially be a redevelopment project. There's also, there's also the Taylor Farm that is currently under contract. That's about 343 acres, where the county has always envisioned that to be an extension of the industrial park or a property that we could potentially land an economic development project. The Taylor Farm has always been on the state's radar for a potential project. When I say the state, I'm talking about the Virginia Economic Development Partnership. So the next area that I'm going to discuss is the proposed industrial development area for the second business park or industrial park that we're currently researching. And what we're looking at is about 184 total acres. And the conceptual that we had, about 70 acres of that is buildable, about four to five parcels each, and they're broken into 20, the 10 to 20-acre lots. So what we're looking for, this is potentially a light industrial park. We're not looking for anything similar to what we have near the landfill. This is more so to attract those small to medium-sized manufacturers, distribution and flex industrial users. And honestly, that's just due to where we are currently with our water capacity. If we had a larger water capacity and potentially natural gas, we could go really heavy here, but at the time being, we're gonna, I think we should focus on a light industrial use. So the tax and economic impact, and we're gonna look at three industrial targeted industries. So just to kind of break it down, what we're looking at here honestly is just ROI. Why do you go after these projects? What does it mean to a locality? So what we're talking about is tax revenue and the overall economic vitality of the community. So I have some term and terms and definitions here. I'm not going to go through every last one, but the ones that I think that may be uncommon for the public are probably indirect, induced in the sales output. So induced jobs are jobs created when direct and indirect employees go out and spend their incomes on consumer goods and services. The sales output is the results generated from that activity. Well, generated from either that construction project and the continuous op- Well, generated from either that construction project and the continuous operation of that industry in the community. So now, so up here, what I have here is the Magnum Economics Report that was provided by the FRA for a prospective ongoing manufacturing operation. And I don't need to break all this down for you, but manufacturing projects are typically heavy on the real property investment, but even heavier on the machinery and tools or the personal property taxes. And a project like this assessed 100% on the real estate, 20% on the machinery and tools is about a $3.8 million annual tax revenue for the locality for King George County.
Mr. Minor, could I ask a quick question?
Please.
What kind of, would you mind going back? What kind of acreage would that, so I see a $2.7 million, sorry, 2.7 million square foot?
Correct.
Footprint for the facility? What kind of acreage is that looking at?
Correct. So this is a, an estimated guess, but about a million square feet is about 15 acre footprint. So Mr. Roberts is in the audience. Mr. Roberts, does that sound about right? 15 acres for a million square feet? So 30, about 30 to 35 million square, 30 to 35 acres for a $2.7 million, $2.7 million square foot building. The next one we're looking at is a data center operation. Data centers are, you know, the thing you have to consider with data centers is that the equipment inside of them is just so valuable. So the numbers, the capital investment are extremely higher than the other industries that we look at. Also, the impacts for data centers are less than you're talking about a distribution center here and a manufacturing. We'll see the distribution later. So for a $1.6 billion real property investment and a $3.7 billion business personal property investment, we're looking at about a $19.8 billion, $19.8 million annual tax revenue for the county, and that's at a 1.5 million square feet buildout. And again, all these numbers are based on a full buildout of a 1.5 million square footage operation. For new tax revenue for prospective ongoing distribution operation in King George, again, for the distribution centers, they put a lot more money in the real property, and they have less machinery and tools or equipment to tax. So you'll get more money off of the real estate side of it than you will on the machineries and tools tax. So 215 million, 59 million for business personal property tax and a 2.9 million, $2.9 millions in square feet. You're looking at a 1.7 annual. The other thing that you really can't, we can't calculate is also there's a tax on inventory. We can't assess that without knowing what the inventory is as well. So any questions on these three slides?
Could you go into detail what you mean by a tax on inventory? Is that the product that they keep in the warehouses?
Exactly. So what the value is on that product? And it's not much. I don't know exactly what King George's is right now, but if you saw the recent announcements in Stafford, I believe Stafford completely removed their tax on inventory, which was one of the lures they got for the Amazon, the DHLs. And I think they had another one as well. Merritt was another one that went to Centerport Parkway. So this is the economic impact. So now I'm just talking about, this is an analysis just on jobs alone. So this is provided by Jobs EQ, a subscription, a economic development analytic subscription that the FRA has. And we're looking at the direct full-time jobs for a distribution center at 500. And again, going back to that terminology of induced jobs. So if you have a 500, a 500 job creating distribution center, you're looking at about 658 jobs total. The sales output in the community is about 125 million, and the compensation or the payroll for that facility is about 42 million for a manufacturing facility. So manufacturing facilities typically create more jobs out in the community just off of the direct jobs. And I know it's the same here for this distribution center. You know, I think a lot of that has to do with the type of manufacturing. We're using what's called a two-digit NEX code. So the more specific you get, so let's just say this was a chip manufacturer, or if this was a electronic vehicle manufacturer, that induced and indirect job number would be way higher, only because suppliers follow those type of manufacturing operations. So if you are an electronic vehicle manufacturer, then the guy or the manufacturer that makes some sort of component will typically follow that EV, and they almost set up some sort of campus at the same time. But for the sales output for that type of operation, you're looking at about 177 million with a compensation of about 37 million. And then for data centers, and this one has a higher induced and indirect job impact simply because the wages are higher. So for a data center, if they're going to hire 150 tech workers, because their buying power is a lot higher, that induced and indirect impact is going to hit harder in the community. So the sales output for that is almost triple the other ones, at about 311 million with the compensation being about 43 million.
I had a quick question. What's compensation?
Compensation is their payroll.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm going to give an example of a manufacturing project that we competed on in Q1 of this year, Project Kent. This was a rebar manufacturing facility. They were going to create 264 jobs at full buildout. This buildout was going to take about five to six years. The average wage was about 70, $71,000 a year. That was without benefits. With benefits, it probably would have been closer to 90. The real property investment, so we're talking about the building, site work and everything included, was about 84 million. Machineries and tools was massive. And again, talking about what's the economic impact of the type of manufacturing? Well, it all depends on what it is that they're making. So their machineries and tools was around 300 million, and then their business and personal property, so you're just talking about like your vehicles, the things that go, they go on to support an operation, was at about 17 million. So I didn't do the assessment at 20%. I just did it at a full out 100 for everything. So this is everything considered brand new, right? Real estate, machinery and tools, business personal property tax. We're looking at about a $10 million annual total tax revenue. So you're probably saying, well, Mr. Minor, what happened to that project? So the challenges to us winning that project at the time was natural gas. We just didn't have it at the time. And we were in conversations with Columbia on how to get it. But again, speed to market, right? Being able to respond faster. And they probably, it was probably another site out there, whether it was in Ohio, North Carolina, South Carolina, Georgia, that could just get there faster. It already had the gas there. It already had the site. It was ready to roll. The other part of it was water usage. We just couldn't help them on the water side of it. So improving that service authority operation capability would definitely would have helped us win that project. Now, these are things that can all be overcome. They just take time, and sometimes companies just don't have the time. They'll go with the easiest and quickest route. So the next one I'm going to provide is a Mecklenburg County comparison. This is a data center comparison. And I'm really just giving this comparison because that's sort of been the topic that's been coming up a lot recently in the community. So I'm going to go through what I think is a better comparison if King George County were to land a project of this nature. So Mecklenburg is comparatively very similar to King George County. And I think if you were to drop a naval R and D base in Mecklenburg, it may be exactly the same. That's the, really the things that sort of separate us from them to Mecklenburg. So again, the population is very similar, 30,000 in Mecklenburg, 26,000 in King George, workforce, population of about 13,000, same for King George County. So employee and wage comparisons, again, heavy in professional, scientific, and technical services, about 2,000 for both, coming down to public administration. And here's where we separate ourselves because of the Daubronn influence that 5,758 total industries were, but higher. Again, Daubronn is going to offset us for that. On the other side, they were able to separate without Daubronn, excluding that. And there we sort of match up very similar to what Mecklenburg has. So our average, I'm trying to see if I can find it here. Where's the average? Right there it is. No, it's agriculture. I'll just move on. And this, this presentation will be provided to the board afterwards. So if you have any questions afterwards about any of this employment and wage comparisons, please just let me know. So in Mecklenburg County, they suffered a few economic hits, but some very impactful hits. In 2002, the Burlington factory closed. This was a wool manufacturer that employed about 2,000 people in Clarksville, right outside of Boydington. In 2012, the State's Corrections Facility in Boydington closed with a loss of 304 employees. You know, in this area, these were major employers for them. So they were looking for a way to replace that tax revenue as well as some of those jobs, right? So they were able to win a Microsoft data center down in Boydington. This was in 2010. And from 2010 up until July 2022, they had an economic, they had a announcement of a data center of Microsoft's data center expansion. So that first phase, it was about, that first phase of that first announcement was about a $500 million announcement. Phase two was a $150 million announcement. Phase three was a $348 million announcement, and phase four was a $256 million announcement. And I'm not going to go through every, all seven phases, but it just goes to show you that this is a heavy capital investment industry. When they put some money in, it's, it makes a huge impact on that locality's tax base. So their site size was about 900 acres, right off of Route 58. And I'm not too familiar with that area, but it's right on that North Carolina-Virginia County line, southwest Virginia. Here's their project buildout. This is the main entrance to that facility. And here's what it looks like from an aerial view. So the tax revenues, and this is what I think, what Board of Supervisors as well as the residents care about, right? Because tax revenues is what keeps everybody's tax rate down. So from 2014 to 2021, they saw an increase of 832% to their business personal property taxes or to their personal property taxes. In 2014, it increased 55%. In 2015, it increased 51%. And in 2017 through 19, it was about 34 to 33%. Just a huge tax generator for this community, going from 6.5 million to 61 million in just 11, 10, 11 years. So this is a tax sheet that I screenshotted to show the investment made to 70 acre, 75 acre parcel in Boydington. So just on that 75 acre parcel, the total value for that, this is just the real estate side of it, I believe is what they assessed at, was 373 million, $786, $700. So a huge, huge investment just on that one 75 acre parcel. How did they spend that tax revenue? They ended up building a middle school, high school complex for about $124 million. And from what I'm hearing is that it looks like a college campus, a beautiful high school, middle school campus, you know, to start to grow their new workforce, to start attracting some more of those jobs back to Mecklenburg. So I just want to close with this. So I think a presentation like this, what it speaks to in terms of a overall for King George County is really what we're looking at is how do we replace landfill revenue, right? That, the landfill is what kept, is what has kept our tax rates down for a period of time. And that's not going to be there unless we want to continue to expand the landfill, whether out or up. And we have to look at how we, one, create new jobs in the community. We also need to look at how we replace that revenue once it's gone. And whether that new project comes from a Birchwood rezoning or a project landing in the new industrial park we're looking at, but we have to do something. We can't just let the community lose tax revenue and increase the taxes. We have to depend upon economic development to offset the tax base. You know, it's about balance. So, you know, with the county growing at the rate that it is, with the broadband project, with the opening of the New Nice Bridge, growth is coming. I think we all know that. It's in, you know, as we mentioned in the Economic Development Strategic Plan, it's inevitable. So we got to do something. And this is one way, attracting one of these projects or multiple, or multiples of these distribution centers or multiples of these manufacturing projects or attracting a data center here is how we do that. So I stand by, take questions from the board. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Minor?
I don't have any questions. I'd just like to say thank you, Mr. Minor, for coming out. I really appreciate it from that. Your job is to come from an economic development perspective and understanding how it can positively impact and what we can do to help offset those taxes to our citizens. And you're absolutely right in regards to the landfill. It does have a limited lifespan, and it is something we are cognizant of on the board on what is the answer to address that. And so understanding what kind of impact some of these businesses could have, I really appreciate just having that data and that information available to me to be, you know, forearmed with that, that knowledge. So thank you for coming and presenting, and we appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else? Mr. Minor, I'd just say thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Roberts, for coming as well. And, you know, that's something that we definitely need to look into. I mean, how do we, how do we bring growth to the county? But then how do we keep it controlled and keep it in certain areas? Because like you said, the landfill is coming to a close. It's got a lifespan. And, you know, how, how do we attract these businesses to come in here and help shoulder the burden of taxes and everything, but to do it correctly and to do, you know, industry or businesses that, you know, are going to benefit the county and its people? So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
All right, moving along, we're going to move to action items. 1104 Department of Information and Technology, transfer FY 2023 CIP funds between IT projects. Mr. Dines, thank you for changing desks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. The subject of this is the transfer of CIP funds between projects, as you said. As for a summary, during our CIP process of information technology this year, the project for Next Generation 911 Geolocation Software and Server was estimated to cost $50,000. After the CIP was approved on September 6, 2022, IT reached out to the provider of our VoIP phone system as a sole source for quote. The quote came back at $60,162.82, which is $10,162.82 over the estimate used in the CIP. We also had another project for IT with a redundant Avaya VoIP phone server that is at the sheriff's office right now at an estimated cost of $78,000. This project came in at $9,768.28 under budget. IT would like to move the remaining budget of $9,768.28 from the VoIP Avaya redundant server project to the Next Generation 911 Geolocation Software Server project. The remaining $394.54 will be absorbed by the IT operating budget. The transfer would be as follows. A credit on the GL code 4 through dash 302 dash 94129 dash 8207 of $9,768.28 for the debit of the GL code 4 dash 302 dash 94138 dash 8107 for that same $9,768.28. And so the recommended action on behalf of our esteemed financial director, I'm in her stead, she'd like to authorize the county to, county administrator to transfer the funds between the IT CIP projects as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
All right, moving along to 1105 Department of Finance, finance, yikes, change order associated with the design of Sedell Brooks Jr. Park Pavilion Project. Ms. Pitts?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'm here before you this evening as Mr. Stonehill stated in reference to the change order associated with the design of the Sedell Brooks Jr. Park Pavilion Project. The original design of the project was for $5,000. Purchase order 4762 was issued to Wiley Wilson for that amount. During the construction of the project, the contractor discovered that the groundwater table was higher than previously identified in the geotechnical report, requiring changes to the footing design and construction. Wiley Wilson performed additional services for redesign of the footings for the shelter. These additional footings were designed to reduce the weight of the roof. These additional design services have exceeded the initial PO amount by $2,000. The transfer would be as, is reflected on your board report at the bottom of the page. And with that, I would request that you authorize the county administrator to transfer $2,000 from the ARPA project's expenditure line to the Sedell Brooks Jr. Park Pavilion Project line.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I ask a question.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. So I'm assuming then we do have the $2,000 available in the ARPA project's expenditure line?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Thank you very much.
All right, we have a motion properly seconded and seeing no more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Do you vote? Okay, any nays?
Nay.
All right, chair votes aye, motion passes.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Pitts. Okay, moving on, 1106, discussion items, I see none. And moving on, 1107, county administrators' report, Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Wait for that to pull up. I just have three items on there, I believe, no, four items. So we, the first and the second item are together essentially. Groundbreaking ceremony for the new courthouse. I believe you all have received an email from our clerk of the court, Mr. Mason. It is scheduled for the afternoon of the 8th of December, on site. We're very excited about this and we are in the process of formulating the invitees and the list of, that we will be providing. And so that moves transitions to the second item, which I believe at the last meeting on the 18th, I announced that we were holding the date for the employee luncheon on the 8th, but we obviously would need to move that. So it is now moved to the 14th of December at the Citizen Center. And I believe that's like an 11 o'clock timeframe and goes till about 1, 1:30. So again, you'll, we will give you, there will be a major invite, you know, a, a card on the groundbreaking ceremony for the new courthouse. And then we'll also provide you with an invite for the employee luncheon on the 14th. The third item, and I don't have anything on the fourth item, so this is my last item. Mr. Dines is going to just give you an update again on cybersecurity awareness. It is only the 1st of November and we know that October was cybersecurity awareness month. So we still kind of have one more report just to provide you. I know some folks are doing their training and we appreciate that you're doing your training. And I think that Mr. Dines appreciates it as well. So you want to go ahead, Mr. Dines?
Thank you so much, Mr. Miller. So even though last month was cybersecurity awareness month, as you know, it's ongoing and this month we've actually started the next two classes. But to go back and take a look at how things went, from our slide here, you can see that we had 87% participation, which is pretty good. That's the most we've ever had. And we, we thank Mr. Miller and our new HR director to try to help push that through to make sure everyone realizes how important this training is. So, next slide. During that first training in October was just an assessment. And each of our users was given questions. And what we tried to do for an assessment to see what we need to work on. And as you can see, our email and human firewall type things were pretty good. But there's some things that we need to shore up on through those answers that were given in passwords and authentication, incident reporting, mobile devices, social media and internet use. So we went to the lowest group of scores and we're going to try to work on those first and build everyone's awareness. So in the future, as I said, we're going to have, that has started today and we actually have 12% participation on the first day. So everybody's kind of into this training, which is kind of exciting. So as that started today for the passwords and incident reporting. And so in December 1st, we'll have another training, another four weeks. And then January, we're going to skip the first, of course, and go to the ninth and then have four weeks there. So after that, there'll be another round of testing and then hopefully we can get to 100% and raise people's scores. And I must admit, I looked today at scores of those first two classes and people are getting no lower than 80% on their tests. And they're a bunch of 100s. We need to have this because eventually we're going to be audited and everyone is going to have to make sure that they have the built-in knowledge to fight off these bad actors on the internet. And we don't want to get written up for not being prepared. And if anything were to happen, because nothing is 100%. We have firewalls, encryption, multi-factor authentication, all of these things in our county. But all it takes is one click and everything could come tumbling down like the walls of Jericho. So we're looking forward to the future and I appreciate all of your support. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Dines? Mr. Collins?
Mr. Dines, I completed October and November's training and just training two of November was to report attempted breaking into the system. So I'd like to report that somebody sent it to me, I think it's you, sending me trying to get into my system over and over and over again. Can you please stop? Thank you.
That was to help you with the issue with the thumb drive you had that took away your keyboard. Did you see my note that I left you?
I did.
Thank you, Mr. Dines. And shouldn't it be cyber awareness month every month?
Every minute of the day it should be, actually. Because you never know when it's going to get you.
I'm sure glad that you guys are there keeping an eye on all of us.
We try.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just add, in a previous organization that I was in, in Texas, there was a sister organization with the city of El Paso and, El Paso, Texas. And somebody in the finance department clicked on a fishing expedition and they instantly lost $3 million. So this can happen and it's very serious. And so you got a lot of bad actors out there and they're sending things that are very subtle in terms of, you know, emails or things like that or, you know, clicking on things. And so I do appreciate what Mr. Dines is doing and, and Derek Messler, our HR director, is helping out as well to spread that word. So we appreciate your participation as well. The last item I'd have is, it's miscellaneous, but I just wanted to say that we met as a group of some of our vehicle users, if you will, to discuss. You have heard that there is likely going to be some shortages on the diesel side. But we met to cover all of our bases to discuss ways that, you know, our organization can continue to operate with receiving diesel or, you know, making sure that, that our folks can get the vital diesel fuel that is needed for a number of vehicles, but also the operation of a lot of generators. We're good on generators right now, but, you know, obviously as, as the time goes by, it's going to be an issue. So we're looking at a number of things and there may be some reports back to you here at the next meeting. But we do want to let you know that we're aware of that. And, you know, one of the things is, that's got to happen, I think. And, and we're going to look at doing this as part of your, your CIP is to expand what the fire and rescue department is doing in terms of coming up with their own fuel depot is to actually look seriously at the county having something with schools. Because right now, your folks out there on the road, the sheriff's deputies, the fire and rescue folks, the school buses, they're getting in line at the Wawa's and at the Sheetz, just like everybody else who's filling up. And if there's ever a crisis or a shortage, we're just as heavily impacted as a regular citizen is. And I do think we need some, you know, resiliency there and, and some, you know, making sure that we have some supplies that will take care of the, the vehicles so that we can take care of the services of the county. Thanks.
Any questions for Mr. Miller?
Mr. Dines, I was just amazed at how many long-lost relatives overseas that I never knew I had that were going to leave me a huge inheritance if I would only respond to them. But I haven't yet, thinking of you.
I'm glad you haven't. I actually got a telephone call that said I won $5.5 million and a Mercedes-Benz, but I didn't call back.
I guess that'll wrap it up.
I move that the King George County Board of Supervisors convene in closed meeting pursuant to State Code Sections 2.2-3711A1 to discuss the performance and conduct of a public officer, namely a member of the governing body, and pursuant to State Code Section 2.2-3711A8 for consultation with legal counsel regarding the provision of legal advice with regard to potential discipline of a member of the governing body. I invite the county administrator and county attorney to attend as needed because their presence will reasonably aid the board in its consideration of topics to be discussed pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712F.
Second.
All right, we have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
Chair votes aye, motion passes. We are in closed session.
I move that the King George County Board of Supervisors return to public meeting and certify by vote that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law. And only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed or considered during the closed meeting.
Second.
All right, we have a motion properly seconded. If we can certify by vote please.
So certify.
So certify.
So certify.
So certify.
Chair so certifies. We're in open session.
Move to adjourn until Tuesday, November 15th at 6:30 PM in the boardroom.
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We are adjourned. Thank you.